Thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Here.
Cheatham.
Here.
Laura.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Ortega.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Blad.
Here.
If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you would remain standing, the invocation will be offered by President Shad Johnson, representing the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, our heavenly Father, we come before thee this evening with gratitude in our hearts for this wonderful community and for this beautiful state in which we live, for this nation and the liberties that we enjoy here. We are thankful for the freedom to worship as we choose, for the opportunity to vote, for the ability to assemble and to discuss the matters of this good city. We are thankful for those who serve in many offices throughout the city, both elected and appointed, and we pray for them. We pray that as the matters of this good city are discussed, that thou wilt bless those who participate, to do so with civility and with desire to make this community a better place. We pray that as matters are discussed and as thoughts are shared and as opinions are expressed, that thou wilt help those involved to come to an agreement and to work together in a spirit of community to make those decisions that will benefit the whole, but also keep in mind those who are in the minority. We pray that thou wilt watch over us and bless us, that we can work to make this community and this wonderful place a better place to live. Bless us that we can increase in love for one another and for those who surround us. We love thee and are thankful for the many blessings that we have been given, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Shad. We will move to Agenda Item Three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed may be moved to a separate agenda, can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, material claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the period of March 1, 2022 through March 11, 2022. B, treasurer's report. Council may wish to consider the treasurer's report for January 2022 showing cash and investments as of January 31, 2022. C, Historic Preservation Commission appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Tabitha Butler to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Tabitha's term will begin March 18, 2022 and will expire March 18, 2025. D, Housing and Alliance and Community Partnership, HACP appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Crystal Lively to serve as a resident representative on the HACP Board of Directors. Crystal's term will begin March 18, 2022 and will expire September 3, 2026. E, council decision annexing approximately 45.94 acres of land located east of I-15, south of Venture Way, and west of the Portniff Wellness Complex. Council may wish to adopt this decision annexing approximately 45.94 acres of land located east of I-15, south of Venture Way, and west of the Portniff Wellness Complex. The subject property will be zoned office, park, OP, and residential, commercial, professional, RCP. F, council decision annexing 18.69 acres of land located north of Vista Drive. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the annexation of a parcel of land comprised of 18.69 acres. This parcel is located north of Vista Drive and will be zoned residential, medium-density, single-family RMS with a concurrent comprehensive plan land use designation of residential. G, council decision approval of zoning designation amendment for approximately 3.05 acres of land located at 600 Jefferson Street. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the request from Dakota World to amend the zoning designation of approximately 3.05 acres of land located at 600 Jefferson Street from residential, medium-density, single-family RMS to residential, commercial, professional, RCP. H, council decision Trelkirk Townhouses Division One final plat approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat for Trelkirk Townhouses Division One, which subdivides 6.65 acres of land into 62 lots, with two lots as common area. This property is located within a residential, commercial, professional, RCP zoning district and will be accessed from the intersection of Gaethie Drive and Foothill Boulevard. I, bid management agreement Historic Downtown Pokatello, Inc. Council may wish to approve a renewal of the management agreement with Historic Downtown Pokatello Incorporated, subject to legal department review, to administer and manage the operations of the Business Improvement District bid. Council may also wish to acknowledge that they have reviewed the employment agreement of Stephanie Pelagi with Historic Downtown Pokatello Incorporated as provided in the management agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda, Agenda Item Number Three, deleting Item A in deference to Councilman Bray.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Ortega.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, you have Agenda Item A, material claims, in front of you.
I just, everybody's got a job to do, and I'm not saying that our city staff doesn't do their job, but I think our job is to comb through this with a more of a fine-tooth comb than what we're getting. There's some things in here that I have no idea why they're there. You know, for example, on, I think it's page one, there's a water heater repair for $1,595. I don't know if that was a six-gallon water heater or a big water heater at the pool. Those kinds of things I need to have some delineation on. I'm just using that as an illustration because our job is to look over this so it correlates with the budget we approve and so that staff knows that we are appreciating their work and also we're being accountable and expect them to be accountable.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So I went through the material claims, item by item, and thank you, I think it was Connie who sent it to us at 8:25 this morning. I appreciate that. And I have entries that I don't have any idea what they are, and my reason for asking is the only way that I can educate myself about our city budget and therefore do my job is to ask questions. So to whom do I ask those questions?
So I would reach out to probably the finance department, and they could direct you to the right person that could give you the answer to that.
Okay, all right.
When you have some questions.
And I-
If you have a list, I'm more than happy to take that list and-
I can just check in with him on my own. And the reason it's, in addition to the education portion, I have, I'm uncomfortable when, for example, we're paying $2,150 to an individual. I have no idea who the individual is, and there's no purpose of the expenditure. And that leaves me uncomfortable. And, you know, and then I have general questions, like, why are we, what do the various property management companies provide us? You know, why do we, and I know sometimes it's a final bill, but on the ones I'm looking at, there's, we're just paying a property management company and there's no reason listed. And then after reviewing some of the past statements, we appear to pay telephone and cellphone out of insurance, and I don't, I don't understand that. And so those kinds of things that just don't, on a very surface level, make any logical sense, leave me, not that any individual, any city employee, anybody is doing anything wrong, but it leaves me with misgivings about the system that we have provided for the employees to utilize, especially when we know from our CFO that we have flawed policies and so forth and so on. So that, you know, I have no desire not to pay city bills, but, boy, I'm uncomfortable.
Those are questions that would be fairly easily answered when you reach out to the finance department.
Okay.
So if you can do that, that'd be fantastic.
Mayor.
Yes.
I had some questions a month or so ago, and I sat down with one of the department heads and talked about the process of approval that our various bills go through. And after discussing with them, there's a three-level approval system that verifies that any invoices that are submitted for payment go through, so that three different sets of eyes are on those before they ever get to us. And I have every confidence in our staff and the system we're currently using. Therefore, I move for approval of consented Agenda Item Number Three, Material Claims, Subject A.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Cheatham, and I'm giving this one to Mansfield. He beat you, or he's just louder than you are, one of the two.
Perks is sitting next to him.
So we have a motion on the floor from Council President Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Laura.
Sorry.
Yes.
Ortega.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Four, is Proclamations. We have two proclamations. The first proclamation will be read by Council President Rick Cheatham, National Senior Nutrition Month, and then the second one will be read by Council Member Claudia Ortega, Week of the Young Child.
Whereas since 1972, the National Senior Nutrition Program has funded local agencies and organizations to serve home-delivered and congregant meals that help to ensure older adults have opportunities to stay healthy, independent, and connected. And whereas more than 10 million older Americans face hunger each year. And whereas local senior nutrition programs help older adults access healthy foods, nutrition screening, education and counseling, social opportunities, and other supports that encourage well-being. And whereas the National Senior Nutrition Program is an integral part of Pokatello, providing sustenance and so much more to our older community members, especially those most vulnerable to malnutrition, chronic health conditions, social isolation. And whereas National Senior Nutrition Program is having a positive impact on our community and its senior members. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pokatello, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 to be the 50th anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program in Pokatello, and I urge every resident to recognize older adults and the community who support them through nutrition services as essential contributors to the strength of our community. And he does not hear.
And he does not hear.
I didn't look at you when you started to walk. That sounds great. Perfect. You coming up, Mike?
Awesome. Thank you.
Very good. We're getting a picture, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Where, okay, where are we at? Here, you guys hold that. Oh, just a minute.
All right.
Thank you.
If you'd like to say a few things, that'd be great.
Mike probably has more important things to say, but I'm Pam Landon, I'm the treasurer for the Senior Activity Center. I serve on the board, and it is a great pleasure to-
Talk to the-
Okay, I'm just not, I'm not quite sure where to go.
Just look forward.
Thank you. It's an honor for the Senior Center to have the support of the city council, the City of Pokatello, Bannock County, and the City of Chubak. We had a great celebration at the Senior Center yesterday. It was a lot of fun, and we are excited to bring new people in, and we really appreciate your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fifty years, right? Yesterday?
Fifty years.
All right.
Fifty years.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Whereas the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children, Idaho AEYC, is celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 2nd through 8th, 2022, and whereas we are working to promote and inspire high-quality early childhood experiences for our state's youngest citizens that can provide a foundation of learning and success for children in Pokatello, Idaho, and whereas teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children, birth through age eight, who make a difference in the lives of young children in Pokatello, deserve thanks and recognition, and whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our society. Now therefore, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pokatello, does hereby proclaim April 2nd through 8th, 2022, to be the Week of the Young Child in Pokatello, Idaho, and encourages all citizens to work to support and invest in early childhood in Pokatello.
From both areas, direction. Thank you, and whoever would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council for continuing to support the little people of Pokatello, especially right now, the way the world is, they need as much support as they can get, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get in trouble by our clerk, but I failed to announce that Agenda Item Six was pulled from the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, so if you're here for Agenda Item Six, it has been pulled. We'll move to Agenda Item Five, is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On April 7, at 5:30 PM, clarification meeting. At 6 PM will be a regular city council meeting. April 14, at 9 AM will be a city council work session. Upcoming events will be annual spring cleanup at the city cemeteries begin March 28. Crews will remove and discard all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations, et cetera, they have placed on the cemetery space if they wish to avoid disposal of the items by staff. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. Please note, in accordance with President Biden's executive order, all individuals must wear a face covering while at Pokatello Regional Airport and on Pokatello Regional Transit. As I just said, Agenda Item Six was pulled, so we'll jump to Agenda Item Seven, Appointment and Confirmation of Fire Chief O'Hearn. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Ryan O'Hearn as fire chief effective March 17, 2022. This is Councilmember Mansfield.
I move that we confirm the mayor's appointment of Ryan O'Hearn as fire chief effective March 17, 2022 on Agenda Item Number Seven.
I'm giving it to Linda. He wasn't even done when you jumped ahead. We've got a motion by Bray, or we've got a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, could we have a few words from Ryan? I was trying to get him, I was waving at him, and he was ignoring me, but his wife over there was elbowing him, getting his attention force.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan O'Hearn, hopeful, fire chief.
Hopeful?
We just, you are-
Fire chief, feels weird.
Hopeful.
Thank you, I'm very honored and excited for this opportunity. I appreciate all the support that I've gotten through this process from my family, the fire department, and other city employees, and from the other department heads that have encouraged me and supported me through this. So I'm really excited to continue to work with the mayor and council, and also the county commissioners, to accomplish the goals of the city and the Amos District. And I think that there are a lot of really good things going on right now, and I'm really excited to keep moving those forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now you can use Chief Gase's easy button. Now you can use Chief Gase's easy button and Magic 8-Ball.
That's what we need, is a fire chief guessing, and an 8-Ball, Magic 8-Ball there. If it's worked so far, we may as well keep it going. Agenda Item Eight, Public Hearing, Pokatello Downtown Development Plan. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding the Pokatello Downtown Development Plan. Council may wish to adopt the proposed document as an official city plan.
Mr. Mayor.
I declare the public hearing open.
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Well, I would like to move to approve this plan, but I'll wait till the hearing's finished. Thank you.
He's trying to move us through. Excuse me, Josh, for Linda for that last one.
If you're against it, he just trumped.
That's right. That's right, okay, we would look for-
Is there dinner?
Yep. Oh, counsel, I might just add that you did receive a hard copy of some papers. That is, when we sent the agenda out, the backside of papers were not part of that, and so that's the other side.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jim Engelsy, long-range planner for the City of Pokatello. The request before you is to seek the council's approval and adoption of the Pokatello Downtown Development Plan. This plan provides a guiding vision and implementation strategies for future enhancement of our city's core. The vision aims at guiding development and investment through the recommendation and implementation of design solutions, as well as catalytic projects and policies. As a living document, this plan is designed in a way that is meant to be built upon and added to, and while the premise, principles, and value proposition of this vision serve as an unchanging foundation, the components and details of the vision will evolve as ongoing public engagement, investments, and community input occur. This document is meant to serve as a companion to the City of Pokatello's comprehensive plan, the Portniff River Vision, and Utah State University's 2018 Urban Design Study entitled "The City of Pokatello and the Portniff River." Altogether, these resources provide a unified vision for the continued revitalization of both the natural and urban ecological systems present in Pokatello and the downtown area. The implementation of this shared vision is key to improving the quality of life in Pokatello. This includes greater environmental quality, economic success, and social opportunities, and an enhanced sense of place. Through the active use and implementation of these guiding documents, the assets and identity of Pokatello will be greatly enhanced in meaningful, effective, and responsible ways. Planning staff approached the city council and work session on January 13 and provided a detailed presentation regarding the plan. The plan was then released to the public to provide an opportunity for feedback regarding the plan between February 1 and February 23, 2022. The plan was then brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the evening of February 23, where the commission held a public hearing to gather additional feedback from the public, and the commission voted to recommend approval of the plan to council. Notice for tonight's public hearing was published in accordance to state and city noticing requirements. Staff has received public comment regarding the plan and has been provided to council for your review. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions? Linda?
First of all, I just wanted to thank you, all the work that you've put into this plan, it's really exciting, and I know there's been years of work built up to this, but to take all of that and kind of put it into this very comprehensive document is impressive, so thank you, Jim. There's one other thing I just wanted to clarify, it's not really a question, and I'm sure you know this, but the, some of the comments were on why we used Utah State students instead of Idaho State students. And as a professor, a former professor in that department, I just want to clarify, Idaho State no longer has any architecture program, never had a landscape architecture program, but we had what was called a pre-architecture program, which you could do the first two years, and that was done away with several years ago. So just in answer to the people that wanted to know why we weren't using our own university, because we don't have the program that has the students that do this kind of work, so I just wanted to make that clear. It wasn't that we weren't interested in working with our own university, so, but thank you for all you've done on this, I think it's incredible.
Chris?
Yeah, for the folks who are concerned about using, essentially raising property taxes or keeping property taxes high in order to implement this plan, and I know that, you know, it's a multi-year plan, it's, you know, you are, there's no way we could know specifically how it's going to roll out, but could you just kind of generally address the concept of, you know, are we going to be intentionally raising or maintaining property taxes in order to fund this?
That was never, never a thought of raising taxes. This is mainly a guiding document for residents, investors, or anybody else that are interested in downtown development, and so there was never a thought of raising taxes in the creation of this plan.
Other questions?
And this really isn't a question, I was just noticing that the comment that mentions indigenous people, and, and I'm, you know, that's, I think it's a very valid comment that I don't recall, at least, for example, any portion of the plan, maybe part of the recreation areas, some way of acknowledging the fact that we are existing on land that was once under the stewardship of our indigenous people. Is there, is there a possibility, could that be included, some, some way of acknowledging that portion of our history as a community?
It could. There is a portion in the plan that talks about the history of Pokatello and the indigenous people.
Right.
But in regards to a land acknowledgement, that would be more up to-
Right.
-mayor and the council to make it as, as an organization-
Right.
-of that acknowledgement.
Yeah. Could you talk just a little bit about the, what's in the, in the plan, since you are more of the architect?
Regarding indigenous people?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a short blurb about that they lived here prior to the city being established, so it didn't go into great detail.
Okay.
Claudia?
A lot of the comments, even the positive, I mean, there's a lot of positive comments, but even those people have a concern about parking. Could you address that a little bit for, for the public as this?
Yeah. We could go into great analysis about parking downtown, but the biggest issue that we found is that it's the lack of finding parking that is public parking. And so we could go into a great analysis of the available parking downtown, and that may be necessary as we are finding ways to direct people to park downtown. But we don't have that analysis in the plan.
So really, what people, what the public needs to understand is this is, this is just a plan, it's not a written-in-stone, this is exactly what's going to happen.
Yeah, it's a guiding vision.
This is just a way to attract investors and attract businesses and things like that, right?
And to give the city direction on, on what they'd like to see downtown.
Right, but it doesn't mean that, you know, somebody's gonna, the mayor's gonna be out there with a golden shovel next week, breaking ground on anything.
I can assure you, he's not gonna be there next week.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted people to understand that, because a lot of time, a lot of people think that what they saw is exactly what it's going to look like and-
Yeah, and it's just a guiding vision.
Jim, if I may just mention a couple things. Number one, about the parking, we do have quite a bit of parking in our downtown area, we just have to be willing to walk a block. And oftentimes, we're afraid to get out of our car and walk 30 feet, we want to be right in front of the building, and so there are, Stephanie might know, I'd put her on the spot, there are a couple hundred, maybe 300 or 400 parking places between the back, between, what is that, railroad, UP?
UP Avenue.
UP Avenue and the railroad, and, I mean, there are a tremendous amount of parking that are vacant every day, all day long, and so if people are driving around looking for a parking place, just move toward the railroad a block and, and walk. You've got a lot of parking there.
Mr. Mayor, to make a point, that distance is less than from the front of Walmart to the back. It's nothing.
Oh, man, now you're asking people to walk that far. So, really, truly, there's, there is quite a bit of parking. It's just a matter of us walking a few blocks to get to where we want to. And so, I think that that is, that the parking, though, is an issue and a concern in areas, we've got quite a bit of parking. And then, I might just add, before I let you go, you know, Jim's done some, some good work, but I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Stephanie and her hard work. She's just been amazing going through this, and, and so, I just want that to be out there as well. So, thank you, Jim. But before you leave, I've got to ask, any correspondence that we have not seen?
No.
Madam Clerk in the clerk's office, have we seen any? Thank you. Then, we will move down to testimony for any of those supporting the application. Oh, we got two of you. No, go ahead.
It's easier for you to get up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have just hit on the one thing that I was going to talk about. When I was a kid in Pocatello.
Get it by yourself, Jackie.
Yeah, yeah, Jackie.
Oh, my name is Jackie Alvard. When I was a kid in Pocatello, we knew how to walk. As a matter of fact, having a parking place, if you had one about five or six blocks away, was no problem, because you were going to go this way and that way. We shopped downtown. There were no places to go away from town. So, we all learned how to walk. And I loved Main Street, because when I think of Main Street, I look back, and I can remember three theaters on Main Street, and not just the one we lost last. But the important thing that I see about Pocatello is, after my years on the historic preservation particularly, is the people who built it, the work that went into it, the building of these wonderful buildings by Paradise and others, and the fact that some of that plan is going to take and put us back downtown, where we should be. And the idea of the city hall being where it belongs, in the old place where I used to go to mail my letters. But, the thing, the thing that is important is I think that it will give a lot of people an opportunity to go back to the 40s and 50s and the Pocatello I saw. And we were a tight community in those days. We had, it's, it's interesting, we had disagreements, but because we shopped together, we went to events together downtown, there was more of a community. And I, my feeling, as I read this, and I totally respect Jim's work on this, is it will bring us back together, so that we will now begin to see what we saw in historic preservation, the Pocatello that should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dakota Worrell. I've lived in downtown. I've invested heavily in downtown. Downtown is kind of the area that when people are, are investigating our city, either visiting, looking to move here, to invest here, downtown is kind of the first place that they land and congregate. It's the first impression that's made on outsiders on our city. And downtown has made a lot of strides over the last decades. We've seen several of the most dilapidated properties there fixed up. We've started to see some foot traffic make our way back there. And, you know, one of the things that I kind of liked most about the draft of this plan that I'd originally seen was the idea of the relocation of the city hall into the downtown area. Obviously, that's just an idea, but my experience is that it's movers and shakers of the community that are in and out of city hall, right? It's engineers, it's contractors, it's investors. It's people who are out every day doing things. And my experience with people like this is, when they're passing through and they're driving in and out of this area, they see things, and they see things that could be made better, things that could be improved, and things get fixed. And I like the idea of that relocation, because I think that naturally, even if not directly affiliated with this plan, that is going to cause our community to be raised up in our lowest-income area. I also think that it's going to bring drops. People are going to be stopping to eat there. People are going to be filling up with gas in this area. There's going to be foot traffic while people wait for their appointments. So, that's one thing that I really like. The second thing that I really like about this idea is, in essence, even though, as Jim has said, this is just a guiding principle for how we move forward, if you look at all the great ideas in this plan, a lot of them are probably going to rely on, directly or indirectly, public-private partnerships, which generally are a great way that other cities have done very well to get members of the community, specifically local members of the community, involved in their community. And when we get people involved, we keep people, and we retain talent. And I think that's really important to note. And finally, I know there's always the concern about raising property taxes. Lord knows, I pay a lot of them. My experience is, they tend to go up no matter what, and I'm not always able to point to the value that I get from my property tax increases. But what I will say is, if half of this plan, as it was laid out, actually came to fruition, that would be a value that I'd be happy to pay for. I think this is an excellent plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other supports, any other support for the plan? Okay, we got one and two. So, come on over here, and he'll hand you this clipboard, so you can fill your name in on it before we. Could you hand that clipboard back?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Alan Larson. I'm an investor and owner in property in and around the Old Town area. I think that, reading through and looking at the plan, I like the idea of bringing life back to the area. I'd really like, I really like the fact that, I think, updating things, I think I could use a good facelift down there, and I, and I like the plan. I like the fact of where we're moving things to, or at least the idea on the plan. I don't have a ton to say, but going through it, I just didn't see a whole lot of negative to it. I'm in favor for it.
Super, thank you.
What's your name?
Alan.
Alan?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, council. Hello, mayor. My name is James Young. I'm a local resident, and I say recent, because I've been here the past couple years to Pocatello. And I'm, I own multiple buildings, including one in the downtown historic area, commercial but I'm currently renovating. The reason which I invested is because I saw what this plan is already showing, is that we are, that we are focusing in a key part of the city that brings traffic, that brings pride, brings joy. I'm really excited about the prospect of the Simplock Square Park being expanded. I am 100% for that. My building's a block and a half away on 240 South Main, the old Great Van Gogh. I just want to say that I am 100% support of the vision we lay to play, and, you know, as a downtown business owner, I will be, you know, open to any public-private partnership to move it forward.
Perfect, thank you. Do you have the clipboard? Oh, it's back there. It looks like we've got somebody else. Come on up. She's going to fill it out, it looks like, so.
Good evening now, mayor and council. My name is Hannah Green. I have lived in the Old Town Potter Park, Pocatello for the past couple years, and I do have a home there. I think that the plan that, specifically the part that takes the unused and underused places in Pocat, in the downtown areas, like the parking lots that you mentioned, I think honestly is something that the city needs. I see so many events that happen outside, all over the downtown area, all over, even kind of the Portnife area, in the plan, that there's just so much traffic constantly, and I don't think we have enough open space for it, and we have, in this plan, we have a purposeful open space. We have meaning to it. We have a stage. We have places that people can gather, and people can gather safely because of these pedestrian crossings that are also part of the open space plan. I think that growth in Pocatello is going to happen no matter what at this point. I think this is one of the best ways that we have to make it meaningful for the most amount of citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, mayor. Hello, council. My name's Elizabeth Preston. I have lived in Old Town Pocatello for quite a few years now. I'm recently a new homeowner as well. I just want to say how much I truly, truly loved the entirety of this plan. I think essentially, it's just going to make everyone, like everyone has been saying, just come together, you know? I love the fact that they're planning on integrating nature back into the area more, so that we, we can appreciate the river more. You know, every single day, I take my dogs out, I sit next to the river, and I look down upon it, and I would, I just love the idea that this is going to give us all an option to actually be at it, to love it, to fish on it, to, you know, wade in it, and, you know, I just, that's probably my most favorite part, because I, I love nature, but I think, as a whole, the entire plan is magnificent, so, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth, thank you. Any others in support of the application? Okay, then, any uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the application?
Nikki Taysom, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 8221. There are many positive things in this, the Old Town area. I lived down there for a year last year, and it definitely needs some changes made. I am all for cleaning up areas around the river to make them more accessible and positive for families to get out. I am very much opposed to moving city hall down there, because that's not the center of town. You have other residents besides that nucleus down there, and it's just like with the Old Town, when it used to be the Old Town Association, you would have certain rules for them, and the other people in the rest of Pocatello wouldn't get that same rule, i.e. sidewalk signs. And so, there was some, there was some play there that was causing a division. And after living down there, and having especially all the alcohol accessible, there's porn shops, the tattoo piercing, that kind, I mean, I care about those people too. I've actually gone in and sung and done things with all of them. But, there are local businesses there who close on Friday, because they don't want to have to deal with the drunks coming from the Friday Art Walk, or the Revive at Five. They lose their parking spaces. The Off the Rails Brewery had their little stand thing taking up a whole parking spot on Main Street that my taxes pay for, when they could have put it in the back like other restaurants have done. And after walking everywhere, I see a lot more, and there's huge drug trade down there. And so, I'm, you know, appealing to the Pocatello Police Department. You just had a brew fest, and they were out all night dealing with DUIs. I've gone down dealing with bar fights, gun shootings, people having heart attacks from meth, six homeless children, because mom and dad are in jail on alcohol and drug offenses. And so, I'm calling on you to look at the entire picture of all of Pocatello. Yes, we need to unify, but we also need to look at what has caused us to not be unified, and the cost to the taxpayers. We don't need to raise taxes. We need to address the cause of the problem, and, and be just in what we're causing our taxpayers to pay for. You know, I asked, when I spoke with the officer that was responding to all the DUIs that night, I said, "Well, shut it down, because then we pay for you responding there, we pay for the jail, the courts down, down the line, and it's not benefiting anyone." And when I have a little 10-year-old boy tell me that he's homeless and on the run because his mom and dad are in jail, literally, and in prison for alcohol and drug offenses, I have a big, big problem with that. And then see him around the bars, F. Night, knowing that little boy's probably being trafficked, I have a big problem with that. And after being in jail, and watching these little boys and girls, juvenile and adult, who can't even function in society because of the alcohol and drug trade, I call on you to address the problem first, and I share it in the name of Jesus.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, Jim, would you like to rebut anything? Okay, then, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this items before you, how do you wish to proceed?
Now. Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of this agenda item with one amendment. On page 85, there is a sentence at the end of that page, the last thing in this document, along with seven bullet points, that I don't think are necessary for this vision. It appears it could be interpreted as setting up a municipal guidance and interference in development downtown. And I know, I've talked to Brent, and I've talked to Jim, that isn't their intent, but in five years or 10 years, when they or us are no longer here to offer that perspective, this looks like it could be a committee that could get in the way of the historic downtown development. And I'd like to delete that small section from this document, which I think otherwise is absolutely excellently written.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Council President Cheetum, and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 9, Employee Handbook Amendment Request, Human Resources. Council may wish to consider approving the following changes to the employee handbook. A, include the new federal holiday, Juneteenth, to the city's recognized holiday schedule as discussed at the February 10, 2022 work session, and B, remove the 12.5 odometer mile requirement from designated immediate response personnel as discussed on, at the March 10, 2022 work session. Councilwoman Lyric.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 9, the Employee Handbook Amendment Request from Human Resources. As outlined in that agenda item, one is the federal holiday, Juneteenth, to add that to our schedule, holiday schedule, and then the second one, the 12.5, the removal of the 12.5 odometer mile requirement.
Second.
We have a motion by Lyric, and a second by Stevens, and a comment.
Before we approve that, can we find out what the budget affliction is going to be based on the Juneteenth holiday schedule, the additional day?
Thank you.
Yeah. I warned you.
I know. Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director. So, there are two items before you today, before I try to address Rick's question. To be clear, we are only amending the handbook, so that means we're only affecting employees who are on the hybrid pay scale, who are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. So, that's roughly 341 people. That's not FTE, because we have halftime positions. Those employees who are subject to the handbook, we do not get holiday hours in the way that police do. Police gets an allotment of hours at the beginning of the year, because they do not close for business. We're all happy about that. But, when we add an extra holiday, what we do is, we actually close city facilities on that day. There is no increase to the budget. We're simply removing working hours, and we're granting those as holiday time to employees.
So, does that mean that CBA agreement employees will not be getting the Juneteenth holiday?
So, we have a very thorough legal department, in case you have not noticed. We are bringing the handbook amendment first, because that is the city's controlling document for regular employees. At the next meeting, so the first meeting in April, you will see two MOUs on the agenda. One is for the police, and one is for fire. That will separately address the collective bargaining agreements, and holiday time there is handled slightly differently. So, this would only be affecting the 341, so we need to amend the handbook before I can bring documents that kind of reference or mirror the handbook.
So, is there any estimate of what those changes are going to be in our CBAs?
So, I can address that, because they are ready. So, for police holiday, we will add eight hours of leave. When we talk about a holiday at the city, we do talk about eight-hour segments. If you're a halftime employee, you get four. In the summer, we have a lot of employees on 10s. Street and water both go to 10s. Police runs 10s on a regular basis. Fire runs eight for office staff, and then they run 48s for their firefighters. We will add eight holiday hours to the police holiday banks, and we'll do that in June, which is the month of the holiday. They can then use that at some point through the year, up until December 31st. So, there is no increase to a budget line. It's an allocation of those hours that there is no payout value on.
But yet, someone will have to work those hours while they're on vacation. So, what's, what's the overall impact to that budget going to be?
Well, those hours are approved by departments based on their staffing needs. So, Chief Shai would have to look at the requests when people ask to use their eight hours of holiday at some point. of holiday at some point in the year. If that causes an overtime situation, he would have to assess that within his current overtime budgets.
What about fire?
Fire's MOU is a little different. They're asking to close their Station 1, which is where we have office staff. And so Station 1 to the public would be closed. Firefighting staff and ambulance staff would not receive any incentive or holiday for this Juneteenth.
And this holiday is always on the 18th, no matter what day of the week it falls on?
The 19th. It does flex. So it would either be a Friday or a Monday. This year, it will fall on a Monday because the 19th is a Sunday.
So how do you anticipate that vacation time would affect fire if they're getting 48 hours?
They're not.
What are they getting?
They're not getting anything. The field staff for fire, your firefighters and ambulance crew, have declined any sort of MOU addressing Juneteenth for them. They are asking only for an MOU for their administrative staff in the office.
Good, thank you.
Super.
And then, when the city employees that work, even when City Hall is closed, because I know that there are people who still have to work, thank God.
We still pick up garbage and we still take care of animals.
And, yes, and I just want, yeah. So those people go on holiday pay for that day?
They do not. They would, will work on a holiday, which is time and a half. I'm gonna use Tom as an example because he's standing in the room and manages sanitation. He will cover any costs incurred in his current operating budget for overtime, so that will be absorbed within the current operating budgets.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion by Lyric and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lyric?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, IFT Grant Application Ratification, Parks and Recreation Department. Counsel may wish to approve the following request related to an improvement project at the Raymond Park Courts, which would convert two existing tennis courts into six dedicated pickleball courts. A, ratify an IFT grant application in the amount of $10,000, which had been submitted, which had a submission date of March 15, 2022, and if the grant was awarded, authorize the acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review. There is no city match requirement. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the grant and authorize you to sign this should it be awarded.
Second. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, City Entrance Signage Project. Counsel may wish to approve the use of city staff time for the removal of signage and installation of signage and landscaping at up to five city entrance locations as presented at the February 10, 2022 work session. Councilman Stevens? Councilwoman Stevens?
I have a question, but I also move that we accept this agenda item as written, but I do have some questions. So...
Just, just...
So we...
Just a second.
A minute.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. Questions?
So there were some items in the presentation that don't seem to be reflected in this agenda item. If I'm recalling, there was city time, at least, I'm not sure about material, for sign fabrication. There was city time for, from Parks and Rec for design of the sprinkler system. And I'm not sure, there was no, who was going to install that wasn't addressed. And there was, oh, and Parks and Rec for landscape maintenance. And so I'm just wondering whether those items that were in the presentation are no longer on the table, or if they went away, when they went away, why they went away, et cetera.
Hannah Sanger, Science and Environment Administrator, they are still on the table. They were, in my head, incorporated in that agenda item, which I struggled to write. So...
Do, do we need to, not for purposes this evening, but for the future, when perhaps memory, everyone's memory is not as clear, do we need to, if those are included, do we need to spell that out? Because there's, there is, I mean, the potential for materials, for signs...
Not, not materials.
Just time.
Just looking at staff time, so...
Right, but if it's not mentioned in the motion that we pass, I guess my legal question is if it's not in the motion, it's not in the motion. Yes, and so, I mean, if we pass a motion that doesn't include items, then those items are not, I mean, they've not been addressed and they've not been passed, correct?
That would be correct.
All right, so then, then I would like to make a motion that we pass this...
You got a motion.
You have a motion.
All right, then I will amend my own emotion, e-motion, my own motion to include, and help me out, Hannah, staff time for fabrication of signs, staff time for design of the sprinkler system, and Parks and Rec time for maintenance.
Second.
So we had a second already, and so, and it sounds like it's still okay with that second.
Yeah.
Now Josh had, Councilmember Mansfield had a...
That addressed my question.
That addressed the question, okay? Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, based on that motion and what's on the agenda, I'm gonna vote against that because I don't think we should be fooling with five signs at once. I think we should give permission, as was in the presentation, for the South Fifth sign preliminarily, so we can get it up, see how it looks, see how it's gonna work, see exactly what it, the costs are, before we authorize four additional city entrance signs.
Can I ask Rick a question?
Okay, sure.
Are you okay after the first sign goes up, then, do you think it would be feasible or possible that if it is well-received and goes well, that the next four could be approved in a single batch?
I think so.
Okay.
I think, given each one is going to require a little different look and design because of its location. And I think the way money is going to come for this, the way PvP is preliminarily planned it, I think there'll be plenty of time to bring this up. I mean, it's gonna take one or two years to do each of these signs and accrue the funds for it. And I think we've got plenty of time to do that down the road.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I guess my question slash concern would be if we, it seems to me that it's going to be more difficult to raise money for something that has not been approved. Whereas if, if potential funders know that City Council is amenable to this plan, then we won't have, put Valley Partners in a position of having to come and ask for a letter that's, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, so my preference would be that we leave it as is.
Historically, that has not been the case with the funding source that's being used for these signs. PvP and the city have cooperated several times on joint projects like this, and the source to the Idaho Community Foundation, the IFT Fund, has never denied one because they know what we're doing and what PvP has a history of, and I don't think that's an issue.
Hannah?
I don't know how many signs we have money for because we haven't costed...
Yeah.
Fully out, but I think we have money for at least two, maybe three, based on some additional donations we've received, so. But the one on Pocatello Creek is gonna be expensive. It's gonna blow our budget, but we could probably certainly do two signs with the money we have and how much, but I'm just guessing now.
Okay.
One of the things I remember us talking about was the standardization of the signs so that there wouldn't be so much variance. So when you knew you were coming into Pocatello with one sign, and you see another sign, you know you're going in the same city. So I don't have a problem with us approving it collectively because the standardization was kind of a key component of this. And so I can't see the design variance.
The installation's gonna vary.
Well, but that's...
What's going to be required?
It can vary, but I think we're on, I would say we're on board. Any other questions before Hannah sits back down?
So the motion, so, I'm sorry, Connie, the motion is what, is what now?
So we had the motion to include staff time for fabrication of signs, staff time for design of sprinkler system, and staff time for maintenance. That was Councilmember Stevens amended motion.
That's the one I seconded.
That's the amended motion.
Okay.
Councilman Cheatham has asked for only one sign to be completed before, and then that the others will come back to council. I have not heard a second on that.
Okay. Well...
I think that was just a statement. I don't think that was a motion.
I was gonna say, was that a formal motion?
No, I don't think that was a motion. It was just a statement and, and so...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Connie.
Any other comments then? Without seeing any, we have a motion by Councilmember Stevens and seconded by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item 12, Memorandum of Understanding, MOU Ratification for Russian Olive Removal Reimbursement, Idaho Department of Lands. Counsel may wish to ratify the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Pocatello and Idaho Department of Lands, subject to legal department review. The MOU provides for reimbursement of $60,000 for expenses related to Russian olive removal in the City Creek area. The contract for the work has been previously approved by counsel and is in process. The required 10% match will be provided through in-kind services. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the memorandum, MOU ratification for Russian olive reimbursement from Idaho Department of Lands, subject to legal review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Airport Transportation Agreement Airport. Counsel may wish to consider the following. A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a transportation agreement with SkyWest Airlines to provide once-daily air service between Pocatello and Salt Lake City. If costs exceed revenue, the city will pay a subsidy to SkyWest for the service. The term of the agreement will be 12 months or until the subsidy funds have been exhausted, whichever comes first. The maximum subsidy for the 12-month period is $800,000.
And?
B has been removed...
Oh, that's right, yes.
Councilwoman Lyric.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 13, the Airport Transportation Agreement, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with SkyWest Airlines as outlined in Agenda Item Number 13A.
Second. Okay, and can I just ask, get some clarification on the motion? Is that with legal department review?
Yes, it was with legal department review.
Okay, thank you.
Subject to legal department review.
You're welcome. Yes, okay, we have a couple here. Let's go, Rick, then Chris, then Roger, then Linda.
Mr. Mayor, I would acknowledge the many people who've weighed in on this particular issue. We have some in the, in the community here tonight. I've had a number of communications, both email and phone calls from people in our community. So far, I've been tracking this, and it's running 17 to four in favor of approval of this. That was as of 5:15 this evening, when I stopped counting. Just, just for clarification purposes, we're not gonna hold a hearing tonight, and you are not gonna get a chance to talk about this, but how many in this room are in favor of this $800,000 payment to keep SkyWest Airlines flying with us? Can I see your hands? How many are opposed?
Hold your hand.
Okay, that's about what it's been running, somewhere around four to five to one is what I've been seeing since this issue first came up last week. Based on the information we got this afternoon, that this will not be a tax-based fund. The airport has found money from a recent grant that they can use to supplement the $800,000 out of our budget. So it should not affect our tax income that provides airline service. I think this is something that we have to do. Our business community, our medical community, and interestingly enough, seniors. I had one call me, and she wrote a letter to us later, that said that she and her husband are old enough now, they can no longer drive to Salt Lake City to catch a flight. They rely on our airport to stay in touch with their family, both in and out of our airport, and they make the schedule that we have work. It's not ideal. There's no doubt about that. We would all wish we had an early morning and a late night flight. It would make connections much easier. But this is what we have, and this is today's reality with air service across our country. I talked to my brother last night, who lives in Salina, Kansas. SkyWest is pulling flights out of Salina, Liberal, Hutchinson, and Garden City. They're doing exactly, and there's no attempt to get them back. They're canceling all air service to those communities, communities very comparable to Pocatello. I, I don't like it, but we have to keep it open. If we're going to develop this community economically, and we no longer have commercial air service, we're cutting our own throats. I don't think we have a choice. I'd urge our council to support this motion.
Okay, Chris?
I think that there's been a real lack of communication with the public around this, and I understand part of that may be due to the timeline, but there was a two-week lag between the first executive session and the proposal to go into a second executive session. I believe strongly that this is a, a critical decision, and it's not a decision where there's one right answer and one wrong answer, and it's clear, hands down, that, you know, based on historical data, you know, based on hard facts, that it's absolutely 100% guaranteed that if we do this, there'll be a good result, and if we do that, it's guaranteed there'll be a bad result. And in those kind, and that's nobody's fault. Life is frequently filled with decision points where it's not clear that there's a hardcore yes, good, no, bad. And we're in that moment, and that's nobody's fault. But I think we have to acknowledge that we're in that kind of decision. So, and, and that is when a community, in my opinion, when a community is engaged in that kind of decision-making, transparency and maximum information accessibility for the public is absolutely critical and paramount. Otherwise, these kinds of decisions tear communities apart, leave people feeling as though they've been held hostage, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't think we need any more of that in this community. After talking at length, over two days, three days, with Alan and Christie, and over two days with Mia Kate Kennedy, the CEO of Bannock County Development, I think there are some critical pieces that the community needs to understand and some critical questions. It turns out, after talking with all the people I've mentioned, that we actually, there are essentially three components to looking at airport viability. And Alan, Christie, feel free, if I, if I'm going, if I'm not being accurate, I will take no offense if you say, "Wait a minute, timeout, wrong." We, there is a, a, essentially a planner consultant, and that is the person who, who was before council. And that person is paid by the FAA, and they are essentially the person who looks at the comprehensive plan. Land use, but mostly infrastructure, are you, you know, based on what's going on today and industry predictions, should you plan to enlarge your terminal in the next 10 years? That kind of stuff. And the FAA pays for that, so city taxpayers do not. Then there is what is called an air service consultant, and that person is strictly around passengers and not cargo, not economic development, nothing. And that is, we, the city pays, the taxpayers, I assume, pay for such a person who lives in Spokane. And, and we have not, to my knowledge, we've not interacted with that person, which is neither here nor there. It's just that we haven't interacted with them. And then the third type of expert assistance comes from what is called an economic, an airport economic development consultant. airport economic development consultant. And Pocatello has not, it is not typically in small airports, small markets, the job and the expertise of airport management staff to be economic development experts. And that's, that's not, that's not a nice statement to them. That's just not typical because it costs a lot more to get somebody with that kind of national expertise than Pocatello taxpayers can pay. So gratefully, one of the tipping points for me on this is gratefully, and I know we've been, Pocatello has been down this path in the past with not great success, well, with very little success, I'm told. But gratefully, the Bannock County Development Corporation has hired a nationally known aviation, or airport economic development person. And that person may not deal with anything that has anything to do with aviation at all. Because that airport is not, it, I believe its official name is Airport and Industrial Park or something. It has like a two-part, two-part name. I mean, so it has a greater purpose, as most airports do. When you drive into an airport, there's other stuff there besides people getting on and off planes or cargo being loaded on and off. There are all kinds of things. And it takes, hell, in my understanding, over the past three days, it takes a healthy three-part infrastructure, three-part plan to make an airport productive and viable. Because there may be, the new industry standard may be that we have to subsidize. But rather than, than take that out of property taxes, if we have a composite airport that is functioning, just like any other composite, you know, this, this component, you know, is making money right now and this one isn't, and so it's possible to use one, you know, to float the whole ship. Something changes, now this one is viable, is not so viable, and this one has taken off. I mean, it gives, it gives us more flexibility if we have a healthy composite. My hope is that with the help of, through Mia Kate's personal efforts and contacts and through the help of this person and the support from Bannock County Development, that we will have true economic development that is much more successful, for example, than the Frigitech project, which is now essentially not entirely defunct perhaps, but essentially. I can say from my conversations with airport staff and my 52 questions, that they, they have not explored every possibility, but they talked to FedEx, they talked to, you know, cargo carriers to see if that was an option. I think it's also important to understand how we got here because emotionally, it can certainly feel as though you're being held hostage. I mean, you know, SkyWest has given us an ultimatum. I mean, it's non-negotiable. Do it or don't. So the straight line that I asked was, draw me a straight line between the pilot shortage, which we are, well, it's because there's a pilot shortage and so Pocatello Airport's in trouble. Okay, draw the straight line for me. And it's, the straight line is pretty clear. Basically, sensibly, common sense-wise, a carrier says, okay, where are our major productive markets? We're going to put our resources where we can make the most money. That's what they're, and then with the bits and pieces, the scraps that are left over, like in any time schedule, you know, you apply your time where it counts the most, and then you get, you have stuff left over, dribs and drabs. And then you try to maximize, and you say, okay, where can I apply this two hours? Where can I apply that, you know? And, and that's Pocatello. You know, we're not an essential flight, we're not the mainstream. We're the airport that they say, okay, we could get there and back in this piece of time that we happen to have right here. And, and yes, honestly, we need to embrace the fact that it's, it's a scrap. It's a leftover. It's a way that they can maximize. And, and that's okay. That's nobody's fault. That's reality. So after much soul-searching and debate, helped by the fact that now it's not even the, you know, the new grant, now the new grant. But I, I also, I, I am in favor of this with the following caveats. Number one, we have, every two months, we have a, a review, like what, what is actually happening out there? Not that we sign off and then the next time we talk about it is when the money runs out or SkyWest says, okay, it's not working for us, we're done. I would like, every two months, we have a thorough review. I've talked with Christie specifically, and she said, they do that anyway. You know, they have a January spreadsheet from SkyWest. It's not an extra burden to them. And number two, we have on both sides, the 60-day, we, we can, Pocatello can say, this is not working for us, we want out. However, you can't say this isn't working for us if you don't know what your metrics are, what your benchmarks are. How do you know when it's not working if you haven't figured out what it looks like when it is working? And I believe, I, I, I cannot comfortably vote favorably for this unless part of the motion is that we will develop metrics, benchmarks, criteria by which, when we have those two month reviews, we are saying yes by our own criteria, this is working or not working, give or take. This is an educated crapshoot. I mean, I've talked with Mia Kate, I'm not making that up. You know, there, we, we don't have historical data. I've talked with Christie and Alan, they agree, yes, we're trying to make the most educated and informed and best guess in uncharted waters. And that's, that's okay. That's nobody's fault. It is what it is. So I need those two other things, but if I have those, those two things, so I know that we're being fact-based and rational, then I can vote in favor.
Okay. So I've got, I just saw Rick raise his hand again, but I've got Roger.
Sorry, that was so long, but.
We've got Roger, then Linda, then Josh, and then Rick.
And then Claudia.
And then Claudia.
Well, I look at this as a gamble either way. We're doing this on the hope that the money will buy us time for the passenger service. We don't know what the airline industry is going to do. We're just, we're just trying to buy a place of tread water. That's essentially what we're doing. I did, I went outside of our locale to do some research, and I did my own version of it, so that I could understand this from greater than the sky is falling perspective. I, I went to several sources. I did a GAO, GAO, General Accounting Office Audit of the Transportation Department. I went to a Statista report, and they did projections on air travel. I went to the effects of COVID on SkyWest valuation. And then I went to Zach's analysis of SkyWest at the current time. I think you get different perspectives when you do that. What I found is that we know that we were doing very well prior to COVID. We know that we're doing terrible in the midst of COVID. We have no idea where COVID may take us. We know there is a pilot shortage. We know the airline industry was one of the most severely impacted industries during COVID. We do not fully understand the impacts of Russian invading.
Ukraine.
Ukraine. I always have a hard time remembering that word. And, and we don't know what the other countries will continue to make as their response. We do know that oil prices have gone up quite a bit. We know that jet fuel will be the most affected of all because it's the highest priced. We do not know what SkyWest's potential business plan will be evolved to. These are all intangibles that we have to try to make our best educated guess at. But I think we need it more than from the emotion that we can't lose our, our commercial travel. We need to see the probability that this can work, and, and the probability could be a 60/40 probability either way. So when I looked at the GAO analysis, I found that when COVID hit hard, the airline industry lost 96% of its travelers for a while. And I found out that over 2020, only 60% of those travelers returned, they only went up to 60% of what they had been. Then when I looked at this further, I found out that there are numbers that are being projected by the Statista report, and I'll just share those numbers. In quarter two of 2020, air travel dropped by 523 million people in the United States in that quarter. In quarter number three, it was down 369 million. Quarter four, it was down 279 million. Quarter one of 2021, it was down 143 million. And then it started coming back, 326 million in quarter two of 2021. 159 million, it dropped back to 159, but it's still a positive number in quarter three of '21. But then in quarter four, when we got Omicron and everything else, it dropped to 109 million. The projections for this year from Statista, and by the way, I'm using reports that came out this week, two of them are dated the 15th. Statista projects that this quarter will see a return of 470, a positive number of 478 million. Quarter two, 533 million. Quarter three, 586 million, then a slight drop in quarter four. Now, just to gain perspective, I went to look at what the total travelers were. 2020, 347 million travelers. In 2021, 632 million travelers. And then when I looked at what had happened in 19, 2019, we had 925 million travelers, all-time highest. So I got a look at what COVID did and all that stuff. I looked at what the stock market has done to SkyWest, because if you're going to invest in a company, you need to know that they're, they've got some value to them. On December 19th of 2019, SkyWest was selling for 64.63 a share. On March 7th of this year, SkyWest was selling for 22.96, almost 66% drop. But then today, SkyWest was back up, selling about $5 more at 27.68. So it's, it's rebounding. When I looked at what Zach's did in terms of what the information was saying, Zach said that SkyWest looks like it's ready to start blossoming. But their overall rating was hold. It wasn't a buy, it wasn't a sell, it was a hold. And so what that tells me, if I were to invest in SkyWest, if I'm already with them, with my stock, I stay with them. If I don't own their stock, I don't go with them. And if I understand this also, it means just stay where you are. So saying all that, it looks to me like the outside data right now says that our best chance is to hold where we are. And there are no guarantees with it, though, because we don't know what these other factors will do. But the, the investment companies, the statistic companies, they're all projecting that there should be a return. They're projecting that the impetus given to us by COVID, negative impetus, negative impetus with the Ukraine war, those things will be in the background as we recover here in the United States. And so I have to say that overall, it's 60/40 on the, on the side of SkyWest.
Okay. Thank you. Linda?
I'm going to try to keep this brief, but I have a few points that I would like to make. I agree with the idea that we need to look at the big picture here. 800,000 is a lot of money, and none of us want to pay this, I, I believe. And none of us take this decision lightly. But what we have to look at is what we stand to lose if we don't pay this. And I think that is a much, much, much bigger number. One of the things that we heard, somebody mentioned, the consultants that came and talked to us, and our airport managers came and talked to us in a study session recently. And one of the things they talked to us about was the economic impact that our airport has on this whole area and on our city in particular. And this was surprising, I think, to, to us up here and, and probably a lot of people in the community, that Pocatello's airport is ranked third in terms of economic impact in the state. Second, first is Boise, and second, I believe, was Sun Valley. And so we're third, and the estimated economic impact is $180 million. So, you know, 800,000 versus potentially losing this, you know, economic impact, positive economic impact of 180 million. That's one thing to consider. When we're looking at the full picture, another thing to consider is a lot of the money that we get for our airport is federal funding, federal grant money. We receive, I think roughly, 2 million a year, two to three?
Normally one, but with the infrastructure bill that just came out, it'll be.
It's, it's, okay. So even if it's 1 million or, or double that, that's still, that is money that we would no longer get. So there's that, that you have to factor in. There's also some money, and I don't remember exactly how much this was, but I think a couple of million that we would have to pay back if we lose our service potentially.
If the airport is closed.
If it is closed. Okay.
That's not on the table.
So these are all the things, I'm talking about the big picture here and just what the potential costs are. So 800,000 is half of this picture, but we have to look at the full picture and look at what we stand to lose. I also want to address the idea of guarantees. People are saying if we spend the 800,000, there is no guarantee that that will give us the result that we want. That's absolutely true. But I disagree with the idea that we can't guarantee anything. There's one thing we can guarantee. If we don't spend the money, we can guarantee that we are going to lose air service. So that we can guarantee. That's, that's the only sure thing in this whole deal. So I get that it is a risk, but I think there's a bigger risk in not doing it. There's a lot more that we stand to lose. And the other thing I was going to say here is, I really just, I agree with Rick. I feel that we have no choice. If we don't do this, it will have a huge detrimental impact on our economy. So I think the simple fact is here, if we don't want to devastate our economy, we have no choice in this matter. And I, I think we just, yes, it's a risk. It may not in the end have the result we want, but not doing it, we know what the result of that will be. So I absolutely think that we, we must do this and we must keep our airport. I've heard today, well, actually, over the last several days, I've had probably as many conversations with people as you have. I think we've talked to some of the same people. And, and even the story that Rick related about the seniors, I had that same conversation with that same person. And it was just, that was an interesting perspective because it wasn't even one I was thinking of. But I've heard from business owners, I mean, small business owners, big business owners, I've heard from healthcare professionals, doctors, nurses, other types of healthcare professionals, ISU faculty, staff, administration. I mean, it seems overwhelmingly that there is support and people understand, I mean, again, nobody likes having to do this, but they understand the need for it and support the need for it. And that was sort of where I was coming from, but I've had that confirmed over and But I've had that confirmed over and over. One last thing I will end with is the idea of paying subsidies. Many airports do pay them. And in terms of the amount that other airports pay, we're actually getting off somewhat light. I mean, I'm not saying 800,000 is a small amount, but compared to, many airports are paying well over a million. So in the scheme of things, this is not an unusual thing to do. And we're, you know, our amount is lower than many others. Rick mentioned that there are many small regional airports that are just being closed. They're losing the service. But those who are not losing it are mainly doing that by paying subsidies. So this is a kind of normal thing to do, especially given the situation, as you pointed out, too, that this is a nationwide problem. So this is the way other communities are solving it. And it has worked in communities. So I'm hopeful that, I mean, there's no guarantee that it will work, but I'm hopeful that things will start to turn around and that this will get us the result that we want. And I just think we can't risk not doing it.
Thank you. Josh?
I want to add one more log to the probability discussion because I think Linda is 100% right, that the only thing that is certain is that if we don't pay this money, the airport will not have a commercial flight. The other thing, in terms of probability, the odds of keeping a commercial flight and getting more access to better times, the 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM flight, for example, or a flight to Denver, are significantly higher than the odds of bringing an air service back if this air service leaves. We've been told in study sessions countless times that getting an airline to come back to a place it has already left is next to impossible. And so if you want to talk about probabilities, keeping this airline would be the cheapest and highest probability way of expanding air service in the future. Second, I don't think it's much of a point to invest $800,000 of grant money, again, not taxpayer money, but grant money, in a tarmac or terminal that doesn't actually service flights. If we're going to put that money to use, let's use it in trying to keep the flight here. I think that's an excellent use of that grant money and does not affect the taxpayers. But the third and final thing that I think is really, really important is that there's a consistent trend in both the senior citizens and the businesses, both small and large, that have talked to us about the airline service. Citizens who buy homes here invest in Pocatello with no guarantee of return. They are never guaranteed that their housing market is going to stay the same, that the city that they want is going to be exactly what they want. They invest in the city and then work to try and make it succeed, with no guarantee that it's going to work out for them. Businesses who open, both small and large, whether it's expanding into Pocatello or starting up, especially in the midst of COVID, do so with incredible uncertainty. But they invest because they want to work towards the success of the city. This $800,000 is an gamble. It's an investment that, yes, may not have a guarantee that comes back. But the rate of return, if it does, would be so substantial that I believe that it would pay itself tenfold in the economic value to our citizens. And most importantly, it's an investment back in those citizens. It's an investment back in the businesses and cities, and businesses here in this city and the citizens who have invested in our community. And I think we owe it to those who banked on us to succeed that we give them every opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Rick, and then Claudia.
Thank you, Josh. Councilwoman Stevens, I'd like you to reconsider your two-month idea. In the contract, there will only be an accountability of costs from SkyWest Airlines every quarter.
Not true. There's a spreadsheet every month, Kristi and Alan.
That may give us passenger service, but it isn't the cost from SkyWest, a fuel, airline cost of delivering service here.
However, the January sheet already exists.
That's right.
The spreadsheet exists. And there is a lag. But by watching trends in fuel, because the costs, basically, the costs are split out between operational costs and then fuel is on top of that. So SkyWest is actually able to say, this is what it costs us to operate in a month. But the numbers that we get don't always include the fuel. So we actually will have, and Alan and/or Kristi, you know, I think, because Kristi, you and I had this conversation in great depth. And there are actually some ways, not to nail it down, but there are some ways using monthly spreadsheets and fuel estimates to come ballpark close.
The, I might have the floor back. The business travel is the predominant user of air service at our airport. And business travel has been down dramatically across the country. We see very few, right now at least, tourist travel because those are going to airports, as we've discussed at Airport Commission meetings. Those are going to places near tourist destinations. And that's a component that we don't see a lot of at our airport. But business travel is way off. During COVID, businesses learned new ways to do business. We've all been involved in countless GoToMeetings or Zoom meetings, I'm sure, over the past couple of years. But that's something that we really can't count on. You know, there's been a lot of discussion over finding alternative sources. SkyWest is the largest regional carrier in the United States. I've been told they're the largest in the world. They fly for a number of airlines. If you're flying into small airports like ours, into communities like this, you're probably flying SkyWest under someone else's name, whether it's Delta, United, American, whoever it might be. And there is no other alternative for us into an airport like this. You know, the old days of flying Hughes Air West, the yellow banana into Pocatello, or flying Delta Direct, those simply don't exist anymore in the airline world. So I think, I agree. We just don't have a choice.
You just kind of wandered up here. I don't know that you were summoned necessarily. There was a question, you kind of nodded and went from there. So go ahead, if you're so inclined, I guess.
Mayor Council, Kristi Heinz, Management Assistant at the Airport. I tell you, we prepared, I got a stack full of papers. We got to say something.
That's why you came up.
But apparently, our conversations went so well that the only thing you got wrong was that the one consultant was not Spokane. The infrastructure consultant was Spokane. That's not the only thing. So you did a very good job at explaining. I just wanted to confirm that.
Not bad for three days of training.
Yes. SkyWest will send us a quarterly invoice. It may be possible, and we have not broached that with them, to try to get the monthly spreadsheets as they close the month so that we can see what those would be. We would probably prefer a quarterly update just because it would coincide with those invoices and we'd have the exact cost. But yes, it may very well be possible to get the monthly spreadsheets ahead of the actual invoice for the quarter, if that's something you desired.
But the contract spells out a quarterly thing.
Quarterly.
Yes, quarterly is when they will report and send us an invoice if something is due.
Okay, thank you.
It would be a month from now.
Correct.
Thank you.
Couple of weeks from now.
The first one.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're good.
We're good.
You're good. Claudia?
Okay, thank you. I want to preface my remarks by saying that federal grant money is tax money. Because the federal government, just like the city government, just like the county government, has no money in and of its own. It all comes from us. So that being said, this is a real tough situation. It really is. And I have some real reservations. First, I have a real problem with our city basically subsidizing a for-profit business. The airline industry has been in trouble for decades, decades. They've been bailed out by the feds at least twice in my lifetime that I can remember, at least twice. And in spite of all that, they don't change their business model. So I'm just not sure how many times they have to slam their head into a car door to figure out that what they're doing doesn't work. But I guess they don't have to because they just come to the taxpayers and the government writes them a big fat check. In this situation, they're asking for this government to write them a big fat check. Secondly, we live in a community where 40% of our residents are living paycheck to paycheck, many with even less than that. Many are just struggling to survive. Inflation is getting all of us. Groceries cost more, diapers cost more, gasoline obviously costs more. Everything literally costs more. That inflation is going to affect leisure travel. People are not going to have as much disposable income. You know, the 60% of the people who live in this town that can afford to leisure travel are going to have less disposable income with which to do that. So I don't think leisure travel is going to boom in this current economy. So it's really hard for me to ask the poorest members of our community to pony up their hard-earned tax dollars to subsidize a for-profit corporation. That's an issue for me. This is a great deal for SkyWest. It's just not such a great deal for the city. The city gets no guarantees of anything. And I know life doesn't have any guarantees. But when I enter into a contract, if I hire you to do something for me and I enter into a contract, I have a guarantee that the job is going to be done. If not, I have a recourse, right? A legal recourse, a breach of contract on your end if you don't complete. We have no guarantees with SkyWest on this. They apparently won't even discuss giving us a more viable flight time. 1:00 PM is not a business travel flight time. You can't get to the East Coast if you leave Pocatello at 1:00 PM. You're not going to get there till midnight 30. And then you have to get up at 5:00 in the morning to go to your business meeting. So they're not working with us. They're just giving us an ultimatum. So this isn't a deal. It's an ultimatum. Because a deal where only one side wins is not a deal. What do we stand to lose? Who knows? Nobody knows. Because the fact is, is that this is a new thing. This is a new situation. So one of my questions is, in the last 20 years, how many businesses have come to Pocatello because of SkyWest flying either one time a day or three times a day into the Pocatello Regional Airport? I don't have the answer to that question. I don't know. There are airports all over the place that don't have passenger flights. They have corporate flights. They cater to charter jets and things like that. They still get FAA funding. It's just not for the same, it's not the same thing. But they still get FAA funding. So I don't want my words to get twisted or my intention to get twisted. So I just want to clarify. I understand the asset that the airport is. I really, really do. I understand it. And I love having an airport 10 minutes from my house that I can fly out of. Problem is, I can't fly out of it. Because the only flight I can get out is at 1:00. And I understand that it would be an asset to economic development. I get that. But there's just a lot of unanswered questions, a lot of unanswered questions. And for me, moving forward without having answers doesn't seem like a really good idea. Then you have, you know, you have all these unfounded comments about, you know, well, we're going to have to pay back all this, you know, grant money and up to $100 million. It's, that's not the case. That's not the case. If the airport shutters its doors, shuts its doors completely, then we might have to pay back some grants. But just because we don't have a passenger flight doesn't mean we're going to have to pay back $100 million in federal grants. So asking questions and thinking about this critically doesn't mean I'm anti-airport. It doesn't mean I'm anti-economic development. It just means that I'm trying to make the best financial decision. If I had $10 million of my own money, I would not make this deal with SkyWest. I wouldn't give them $800,000 of my money for nothing in return, not even a 6:00 AM flight that we could fill. Because a 6:00 AM flight was always full with business travelers. But we can't even get that from them. So, I mean, I get, my vote's probably not going to make any difference based on everybody's impassioned speeches. So I get that this is essentially, when we vote, going to pass. But I'm not going to be able to support it at this time for all of these reasons.
Okay, we've got Josh, then Rick, then Roger.
And Chris.
And Chris. And then after Chris, we're probably going to vote.
Well, it actually took curtail discussion, according to Robert's rules, which even though we've never adopted any running rules, takes a 2/3 vote of the council, just FYI.
We don't operate under Robert's rules.
We're probably, we'll probably.
Well, if we're not.
Go ahead, Josh, go ahead.
Upping by Robert's rules.
Josh has the floor, thank you.
I'm concerned about the requests of Councilmember Steven for the review and the benchmarks being a condition of this motion. Because as we were just told by the members of the airport and the director, those reports may be available, but they may not. Which means if we don't get those reports and we cannot review it in two months, this motion legally would be null and void, would be my understanding. If we don't have unspecified benchmarks that are not clearly detailed, I mean, we could come back and say, well, these don't meet our request and thus this wouldn't be justified, this motion isn't legitimate. I think we have the clear motion, I assume, and with 100% confidence, that the airport will keep us updated quarterly on the status and continuation. I think a lot of departments do already. And so I don't believe including that in the motion is a necessary part.
Hey, Rick?
I want to make an appeal. You know, one of the documents we were given this evening shows our load factor and employment. And I have served on the Airport Commission the last four years as one of my council liaison assignments. And right now, the last I remember, we were at 53% load factor on the single flight that flies out of Pocatello. I want to make an appeal to our business community to use the Pocatello Airport. If we could get to that 70% to 80% load factor, we will see action from SkyWest because then they will be making money at this airport. And that is their goal, as well as ours, to continue service. I'd also like to have people consider helping the city of Pocatello maintain this flight. How much would it take from the big businesses in our community and our region to chip into a fund, perhaps with a chamber, Bannick Development, whatever it might be, to chip in? And if this $800,000 doesn't get us exactly where we need to be by the end of this year, help us to extend a contract and keep this going until we can revive the kind of air service that we want in our city.
Thank you, Roger, and then Chris.
Well, I think there are a couple other positions we need to understand when it comes to our airport. The first position, I believe Rick's on track. First position is, we're not going to get business travelers to travel at noon. They just are not going to do it. Very few will do that. What I have heard is that we're getting leisure travelers that are willing to travel at noon. And that's where our market has gone with the airport. We are marketing to the leisure travelers now, and the grandma and grandpa type of people that can go out. We lose 56% of our people who fly to Salt Lake alone. If we, and I know there's got to be enough leisure travelers in that group. If they would fly from Pocatello, it would help us in this interim period. That needs to really be our appeal. Our appeal needs to be fly, support, Pocatello. We've done that all along. We've started campaigns years ago. Our airport is only as good as the people that use it. Bottom line. It doesn't matter what we put in terms of money. If our people do not use it, it will not be something that's around for very long. So we need to do, we need to really support the leisure travel with our flight right now. If we get to the other, I think business people do it. But I know when I've traveled, I was traveling at least six times a year, even with our three flights, it didn't meet the schedule I was under. Because I couldn't get out of here without going the night before in council meetings. I had a lot of meetings on Friday and council meetings preempted leaving the night before. So what I, I think we also need to understand that an airport has many different levels of connectivity with the community. Commercial passenger service isn't the only place of connectivity. And so we need to understand, we can prosper more by diversifying more. And I think that's an important thing. The airport park out there. The airport park out there is a great place for us to be expanding. Then another component of this is, it's always going to be risky. And we could put out $800,000 and oil prices go so high that they suck all of that away in a hurry. Or we could, we can put it out there and the world opens up and there's a pilot shortage that doesn't. This is risky, but I think we got to do it. But when I was in Texas, I also remember what they said about, don't keep putting money in a dry hole. You know? People have a tendency when, well, it's like somebody's lost, their tendency is to walk fast because they don't want to believe they're lost. And they get further lost. Or people want to double down when they're gambling because they, they don't want to be in a losing streak. We have to somehow be able to assess this and say whether or not we are viable. And it's going to depend on our people. This $800,000 will not achieve anything if we don't have our people stepping up and amending their schedules so they can fly in and out of Pocatello.
Thank you. Chris.
Yeah, maybe my brain works differently than other people's, but I, unless I refrain from making decisions, important decisions, based on emotion. And I do my level best to make important decisions based on the facts that I can gather by asking questions. Questions on the pro side, questions on the con side. Because every situation is three-dimensional. It isn't just about the pros and it isn't just about the cons. It's about the balance and the risk factor when you look at both the pros and the cons. I, I also am, I understand the usefulness, usefulness in a general way of finance reports or impact studies that are generated by algorithms. But we all, quite recently, saw all kinds of mess and confusion around our local home values based on the fact that we had a new algorithm that was applied and it didn't necessarily make sense in all cases. So I understand the usefulness of, of, you know, this is the financial impact in Pocatello generated by an algorithm. And I have actually, I did check, and that is an algorithm-generated financial number. It is not a specific study done for Pocatello, which I understand is, you know, that would be very, very difficult and complex to do. But I think it's important to understand that's an algorithm-generated number, not a study-based Pocatello-specific. Another one of my, the concerns I have, and which is why I believe it's important to have benchmarks, and whether it's quarterly, pardon me, quarterly or every two months, I mean, that's not going to, you know, I'm not going to have a heart attack over 30 days. But if, if SkyWest, just like if we lose this flight, we'll never get it back. Well, you can take that reality and that, that human proclivity and also say, once SkyWest has us subsidizing them, why would they ever walk away from that? Why wouldn't they, since they're a profit corporation, they have shareholders, their job is to make money? Why, unless they had to, would they walk away from a subsidy, a revenue guarantee? And whether they're making money or not making money, they can just pull the flight because they feel like it. So they can put us over this same barrel, whether they're making money or not making money. There's, there's no, the FAA, you know, the, the grants that prevented airlines from doing that sort of thing, required them, you know, you can't pull your single flight out. Those, we're not functioning, at least based on yesterday's information, we're not functioning under those grants anymore. So that's a concern. I, I also do know that, so for, that, that I believe that leisure time is the best stopgap. And so, for example, I was texting or emailing back and forth with Mr. Rick Phillips from Simplot, and he, and I asked him, you know, what, what did your business travel look like? I mean, you know, locally, give me a, give me a real time. And he said, 2019, Simplot here booked 201 total business flights. In 2020, it was 62. In '21, it was 74. And in '22, which obviously is, you know, a couple of months, it was 11. But I'm not really, so, so clearly, locally, business travel from one of our major businesses has fallen off significantly. Now, that, maybe that's different for others. I don't know. But at least that's a benchmark. And so that, that tells me that what the airport staff has done, presumably with input from consultants and possibly Bannock County Development, is they have refocused on, for the moment, on leisure time travel. Because to, to, based on 2022 numbers, for our one flight, and that's with no increased fuel costs, based on January 2022 numbers, for our flight to break even, it would have to be 85% full. That'd have to be the average. And that, that's, again, based on conversations with people who know more than I do. And, and that would be, that's, that's a steep, that's a steep hill. I mean, so, so we have to, there, there are pros and there are cons. There are. And they're very real. And when I make decisions, impassioned people can tell me 50 times a day, if we don't do this, the whole town is going to die. Give me the facts. We have no case studies. I ask me a Kate. Show me a city where they've done, they've given up their airline, what happened? Show me a city where they didn't, what happened? Nobody has those case studies. Nobody has that information. It doesn't exist. So people who tell you that they know what is going to happen, that it's absolutely, nobody knows that. Nobody knows that.
Thank you. With that, we have a motion. The motion by Lurik, and a second by Cheetum.
Can we hear the motion?
Hold on. I, I just have a question for everybody on the council, and, and actually, everybody in this room. I just want you guys to think about one thing going forward. Because I, I know you guys are going to pass this, and that's fine, that's the process. But think about, everybody in this room, think about, what's the limit? What's the limit? When are you, when, how much money, after we put 800,000 in? It's kind of like when you take your dog to the vet, right? And you've spent $6,000 on CT scans and stuff, and it's like, well, it's only going to cost you $500 more for this test, and then we might be able to figure it out. After you've put $6,000 into that dog, are you really going to not do something over another five? So I just want everybody in this room to start thinking, what's the limit? At what point are we going to stop putting money into SkyWest? You know, it's, so just think about that as you're voting, because at some point, that's going to be a real question in front of this council.
Okay, thank you. Could you, Madam Clerk, please reread the motion?
And I will amend to say every quarter.
Your idea was not even part of the motion, and so there's not an amendment.
Well, there was, I made a motion that included, well, all right.
There, there was no motion made that was, that was a question. So let's hear what the motion was, if she's confined it in her notes.
To approve and authorize the mayor to sign, let me get back to the A, to sign a transportation agreement with SkyWest Airlines to provide one, one daily air service to Pocatello and Salt Lake. If costs exceed revenue, the city will pay subs, woo, now I'm cleared out, sorry. The term of agreement will be 12 months or until the subsidy funds and get exhausted.
So it is the motion that is in our agenda, without any alterations?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
That is. So the motion was by Lurik, the second was by Cheetum. With that, Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Bray?
I'm voting for it, because I believe that's what these grants were designated to do.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
No.
Stevens?
I have to know, Mr. Mayor, do I have a personal guarantee from you that we will have quarterly updates? Because you set the agenda, and you are the only person who can guarantee that that conversation will come before the council.
Those, I can tell you, the quarterly updates may not be in front of the council, but you will have a quarterly update via email, if not in a work session, yes.
Okay.
There, there, as long as, as, when they get it, so if you say, all right, I want to see it this quarter, and the quarter just ended, we've got to get it from SkyWest. But you will get the reports as the airport gets them.
Right. And that's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking for is an update from our airport staff based on what they, on the data that they have about whether or not this is tanking in some way. And I don't even know what that would look like. But I, I, I don't, I don't just want, you know, a quarterly report that I have no expertise for interpreting because I don't have the big picture. I mean, I guess I can always call Alan Christie and me a Kate, but I can't do anything with that. I mean, it could be tanking like crazy. And if it doesn't come before council, it doesn't matter.
Does your vote, yes or no?
So, well, she was asking me a question, then she'll, then she'll vote. I, I'm, I can assure you, you will be getting a report. I'm not sure I know what kind of a report you want. So if, if you and I can have a discussion, I will do everything we can to get the report. And an opinion, really, from the airport staff is really, I think, what you're looking for. So I, I think we could do that.
And I think also that, that opinion should include info from Bannock County Development, because they have a whole piece of the puzzle that, that isn't, it, it impacts the city, but it's not city, which is this development director.
Bannock Development Corporation?
Yes.
Not county.
It's not Bannock County.
Nothing.
Bannock Development.
Yeah, yeah.
So I can, I can get it from them. I can't force Bannock Development to give us a report, though I'm sure we can work something.
Do I have permission to call you and ask you your opinion of how this is going? All right, I can vote yes.
Okay. Yes. All right, thank you. Then we will move to Agenda Item 14. Idaho Power Easement, Pocatello Regional Airport. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign, subject to legal department review, an Idaho Power utility easement at Pocatello Regional Airport.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move for approval of Agenda Item Number 14, the Idaho Power Agreement at the Pocatello Regional Airport, and authorize your signature, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetum and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Ortega? Oh, and Stevens.
Yes.
Did that one of us you left? Sorry.
Ortega, Stevens was a yes. Agenda Item 15, Piggyback Bid Acceptance and Purchase of SpaceSaver Shoving for Evidence Storage Rooms, Police Department. Council may wish to consider a piggyback bid, Sourcewell Contract Number 010920 SPC, for the purchase of SpaceSaver Shoving System for the Police Department Evidence Storage in the amount of $108,430.79. And if accepted, authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents, subject to legal, legal department review. The price includes shipping and installation of the units in three evidence rooms. The amount has been budgeted in the Police Department's fiscal year 2022 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize or accept the piggyback bid for, for the Police Department, that we instruct you to sign the necessary documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 16, Piggyback Bid Acceptance and Purchase of Refused Carts, Sanitation Department. Council may wish to consider a piggyback bid, Sourcewell Contract Number 041521 REH, for the purchase of Reher Pacific Refuge, or Refuge Cart in 2022. And if accepted, authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents, subject to legal department review. The sanitation department purchases carts by the truckload throughout the year as needed. Funds for the purchase have been budgeted in the sanitation department fiscal year 2022 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lurik.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve piggyback bid acceptance and purchase of refuse carts for the sanitation department as outlined in Agenda Item Number 16, and authorize your signature on the necessary documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurik and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 17, 2022 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation CIPP Project. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the 2022 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation CIPP Project. A, accept the lowest responsive bid received on February 17, 2022, from Insulform Technology and for a total bid of amount of $430,425. And if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the mayor's signature on an, on an agreement between the City of Pocatello and Insulform Technology in the amount of $430,425 for the 2022 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation CIPP Project, subject to legal department review. The project includes rehabilitating 35 degraded sanitary sewer mainlines with a cured-in-place, cured-in-place pipe CIPP system. If the approved, if approved, the work will begin in June 2022 and will be complete by the end of September 2022. Funds for this project have been budgeted in the Water Pollution Control, WPC, fiscal year 2022 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the 2022 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project by accepting the lowest responsive bid and by authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement between the city and Insultum Technologies, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheetum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 18, Bid Agreement, Clark Street ADA Improvement Project. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the Clark Street ADA Improvement Project. A, accept the lowest responsive bid received on February 23, 2022, from M&amp;S Development and Construction LLC in the amount of $295,279.23. And if accepted, B, authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement between the City of Pocatello and M&amp;S Development and Construction LLC in the amount of $295,279.23, subject to legal department review. The fund, funding for the, funding for 80% of this project will come from Idaho Transportation Authority, 5310 grant with a 20% city match. Councilwoman Lurik?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the, accept the bid and, and approve the agreement for the Clark Street ADA Improvement Project as outlined in Agenda Number 18, and authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement, and subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurik and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurik?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 19, An Ordinance, 19A, An Ordinance Amending the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map for Property Located East of Interstate 15 and West of Portnoy Wellness Complex by Designating Approximately 12.03 Acres of Land as Employment E and Approximately 54.01 Acres as Mixed Use. Map for Property Located East of Interstate 15 and West of Portnoy Wellness Complex by Designating Approximately 12.03 Acres of Land as Employment E and Approximately 54.01 Acres as Mixed Use. Counsel this item before you, how do you wish it to be read? Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that an ordinance, Agenda Item Number 19A, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheetah. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetah?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Matt, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending the comprehensive plan land use map for property located east of I-15 and west of the Portnoy Wellness Complex, Bannock County, Idaho, by designating approximately 12.03 acres of land as employment E and approximately 54.01 acres as mixed use MU. Said property being more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
36 seconds. Nice job.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetah?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
All right, we'll see if he can be faster this next one. 19B, An Ordinance Vacating the Public's Interest in an Access and Utility Easement Located Across Lots 1 and 2, Block 1, 14-hole subdivision. Council, how do you wish the ordinance to be read? We're gonna give Mansfield an opportunity to give this one a shot.
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 19B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
I was a little worried, because I always look for Bray to do those.
Sorry. Didn't mean to scare you on that. Didn't mean to take that from you, Roger.
Just a little anxiety on my part. We have a motion by Mansfield, a second by Cheetah. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetah?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Matt, could you please read the ordinance?
Ready, go. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, abandoning and vacating the public's interest in an access and utility easement located across lots 1 and 2, Block 1, 14-hole subdivision, Bannock County, Idaho, and more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A, providing that the easement herein vacated shall be distributed in its entirety to the adjoining property owner TL Shaver LLC in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 5311 and 501306A, as deemed to be in the best interests of the owner of the vacated property and for the public good, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final.
38.
Mr. Mayor, could we have a champions cup? And that we pass from, and I, and I believe the first award would, would, would go to Matt, and then it'll be up to the other attorneys to see if they can better his record.
Now, now, you mean, the next one, give us some Rich Deal type of motion.
Throw some emotion in.
Sir Laurence Olivier.
I declare that to be the final, shall the ordinance pass.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetah?
Yes.
Lurik? Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 19C, An Ordinance Amending Title 15 Buildings, Buildings and Construction of the Pocatello Municipal Code to Adopt the 2018 Edition of the Wildland Urban Interface Code and Approve Amendments to the 2018 Edition of the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Council, how do you wish it to be read?
Now. He had his hand up.
Go ahead, here.
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 19C, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Good, but not better than Josh.
Still gotta start leaning to Bray. We have a motion by Council President Cheetah, a second by Bray. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetah?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Matt, hold on, wait until Claudia says go.
And remember, use your hands. Emote.
Need to know, is it emotion or speed?
Emote.
They're competing to get rich.
If you want a trophy, we need both. This ain't T-ball.
Remember, we spent a lot of time on the airport, so we expect you to fly out of here.
All right, ready, go.
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending Section 15.02.010, code adoption of the revised and compiled ordinances of the City of Pocatello, 1983, to adopt the 2018 edition of the International Wildland Urban Interface Code as amended, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
Wow. 20. See how fast I lost control of this meeting.
You should part-time at crime scene watches.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetah?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 20, Items from the Audience. This time it's been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action on this, at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there is three minutes per speaker. Our first speaker is Scott Workman. He said he wasn't gonna stay here, it took all night long, and it's.
It took all night long.
It took a minute.
Introduction, I'm Robert Scott Workman, I'm running for Districts 28B seat. If you understand what happened to redistricting, it's a mess. So anyway, we have, Bannock County has three legislative districts in it, and your chairman and me, he's in A, and I'm running for B. By introduction, I am a dairy farmer from southeastern Idaho. I sat on the Franklin County Commission for eight years. I got to know a mayor here when he used to ref games, him and Hardy, I used to yell at him a lot, but he was always fair, I felt like. So anyway, and then we got to know each other from my board. I sat on a number of boards when I was a commissioner, and for that reason, what can I say, you won't let me campaign, I'm not trying to campaign, I'm just telling you my experience, so.
That's all you can need to do.
I know, in fact, I was a commissioner for eight years, and experienced, had, had a lot of experiences dealing with different boards throughout while I was there, so.
Sounds great.
Endless.
Yeah, my goodness. Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Nikki Taisom.
Nikki Taisom, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, H3201. Section 4 of the Constitution states, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government." Article 6 states, second paragraph, "The Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof, under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of this land." The first article states, "No capitation or other direct tax shall be laid unless in proportion to the census or numeration herein before directed to be taken." When you're talking about the budget, you make a budget, you bring it to the people, we discuss it, we approve or disapprove it, and then if we approve it, you take a census and divide that budget evenly across the board, everybody paying the same amount. If we don't approve it, you go back to the drawing board until we do get it dealt with, but it's divided equally. We used to be a poll tax, not property income sales, all these taxes that are taxing us to death. I'm calling you to go back to this. And also, no money shall be drawn from the treasury but in consequence of appropriation made by law. The Fourth Amendment states, "The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures," that includes taxes, "but upon probable cause supported by oath or affirmation." Article 5, I mean, Amendment 5, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." I'm here because it costs taxpayers $88 and some cents to house an inmate every day in Bannock County Jail. There was a lady through Montana there on a drug charge that was sat out there in that jail 11 months. You're not charged as an inmate until you're sentenced, and only at $25 a day and up to $500 max. That was on our tax dollar that we housed that woman unconstitutionally. We, the people, are the sovereignty, that's what a republic is. We, the people, establish the law, we, the people, protect and preserve what we have been given in this document. As the supreme law of this land, city, county, state code do not trump this document and all laws pursuant thereof, even the school board or ISU have to be according to this. We pay public service benefits for every public servant, we pay nonprofits, we pay STEM corporations, we pay CRP farmers, we even pay foreign nationals, we pay grants, we have housing, welfare, we subsidize corporations. People are losing everything, being leached off of. In America, this was a country founded on independence. If you want something, you get out and work for it yourself. We have people that are being taken their taxes and then given them to nonprofits who keep, compete against them. I've seen that even with the golf course. I do landscape work, city has paid for that, they've paid for the water bill, they've paid for the parking by the tee box.
Thank you very much, thank you, Nikki. With that, we have no one else that has signed up for that, the, this agenda item, so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you for joining us tonight.